Good morning, everyone. I’m Lisa Bender. I’m the president of the Minneapolis City Council. I’m going to call to order our regular meeting of the city council for May 11th. Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Present.
Ellison.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Palmasano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Kano.
Is absent.
Reich.
Here.
Fletcher.
Present.
Jenkins.
Here.
Schrader.
Here.
Worsami.
Present.
Councilmember Kano.
Here.
President Bender.
Here.
There are 13 members present.
Let the record reflect that we have a quorum. We have a couple of changes to today’s agenda that is before us. The first, I have an amendment which is an item that was submitted by the city attorney. This would be authorizing the city to join an amicus brief in support of the plaintiffs in a lawsuit pending before the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit. A copy of the staff report, the RCA, is at your desks with additional information, and we can see if the city attorney would like to answer questions about that later. So I offer that amendment to the agenda and see if there are any other amendments from councilmembers to the agenda. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay. All in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries and the agenda is amended and adopted as amendment. Next, we have the minutes from our regular meeting of April 27th for acceptance. May I have a motion?
So moved.
All those in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries and those minutes are accepted. Finally, we have the referral of petitions, communications, and reports to proper committees. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And that carries. Those referrals are made. The next item on our agenda is the reports of our standing committees. We will begin with the report of the Economic Development and Regulatory Services Committee, presented by the committee chair, councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. There are 11 items on our agenda for approval this morning. Item number one is the most notable item. This is the reappointment of Noah Shukman as Director of Regulatory Services. Items two, three, four are new or expanded licenses for businesses. Item five are the liquor business and gambling licenses. Items six, seven are business license operating conditions. Item eight is a low bid. Item nine is a rental license reinstatement. Item 10 is a travel donation acceptance. And item number 11 is extending the development rights at 4146 Fremont Avenue North. With that, I’ll move items one through 11 for approval this morning.
Councilmember Goodman has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Kano.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
So we are very well informed and in tune with the implications of continuing to keep that economic integration section in the actual trust fund language and what that brings in the broader scope of the federal and state conversation regarding affordable housing dollars and compliance with some of those directives. I do want to say that we, as a council, need to be more careful in how we use the word "integration." That word carries a lot of legal and historic definitions in a way that society was run and governed before, and I think we do a disservice to our residents and to ourselves when we bring up that term in a context like this, because it does not reflect what's actually happening in our communities. It does, it does not help us explain how our communities function and are regulated and are governed today. And so I would argue that the ninth ward is one of the most racially integrated parts of the city. We have East African families and mosques, and we have Little Earth, and we have Mercado Central, and the ninth ward is still majority white community. Like, if you look at the statistics, it is still a ward that is, whose majority population is non-diverse racial, racially diverse residents. So we need to figure out a way to discuss this in a more intelligent way that describes what's actually happening in our neighborhoods and the aspiration that we see for Minneapolis. So I just wanted to put that as a, as a sort of on our radar, that we need to really figure out how to reframe this discussion, because I think we're misinforming people when we keep talking about economic integration and racial integration and segregation. Those are very loaded terms that we are using quite flippantly on this council. I myself have used them because we do have the codification coming from the Met Council as the racially concentrated areas of poverty, and I give us a challenge as a council. We need to come up with new ways to talk about our city, to talk about our communities. We need a new framework. We can come up with that as a, as a local city government unit. We did it with Indigenous Peoples' Day when we abolished Columbus Day. We can do it with this. We don't have to continually lean on a framework that is erasing the cultural richness and the positive contributions that come when communities of color are able to create their own economic fabric that sustains and invests in our city when our city didn't want to invest in itself. So that's kind of a side note. I do want to say that we do have a conversation about inclusionary zoning happening in our city, and that's another tool that we can use to support affordable housing development happening in areas that have more privilege, that have more resources, that have more access to development dollars. And, and I want us to continue to have that discussion. I also want to acknowledge that areas like Councilmember Philippe Cunningham's ward and Councilmember Ellison's ward and my ward are areas that people want to live in. These are areas with investments in public transportation. The ninth ward is home to one of the first light rail lines in the state. This is a TOD community. We're going to get the 35W Lake Street Transit Access Project actually built out within our, you know, short time here. Within the next four, four years, we will see that build out to begin, and that, that project touches four wards. And so folks do want to be in these areas, and, and we need, we have a responsibility to retain that diversity and to stabilize those communities who are feeling the most pressure from rising rents and from the free market trends, which are doing very well all over the city. Although my area is technically considered a racially concentrated area of poverty, housing prices are skyrocketing. Market rate housing is happening. We don't need to worry about the free market and where it's not functioning. It's functioning very well in a lot of parts of the city. What we need to double on, double down on is our affordable housing investments, and instead of talking about 50% or 60% AMI, we should be going down to 30% AMI and talking about rent control and talking about rent stabilization and other ways to really retain the folks who right now, today, are being displaced as we're having this discussion. So I'm sorry if I got a little passionate about that, but I just feel like there's just so much that we need to unpack and really dig deep on. I'm really glad we're part of the Policy Link efforts on, on housing justice, and I'm glad for Council Vice President Andrea Jenkins's leadership, leadership on that and Councilmember Ellison on that. I think this is going to bring us a lot of tools that we need to really elevate the, the true nature of this conversation that I think right now is being overrun by, by sort of a mainstream definition of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Conno. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Councilmember Goodman for really taking us back to the data. I think that that, especially in committee, looking at the map, was really instructive. One, one part I do disagree on is I do think this is a policy change. When we, in committee, one thing Councilmember Conno talked about was that every point matters, and I think that that's absolutely true here. And I also think that this is something that we need to really look at. How are we using all the tools that we have? This is just one part. This is just the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I also agree that the inclusionary zoning might be a better way to address the challenges of building in higher wealth areas. I absolutely think we need to focus on putting affordable housing in all parts of the city, but those, each area creates its own challenges. And I think for this one, where we're getting federal dollars, where we have a mandate to really help out as the best we can, I think this is smart and reflects the policies of the city council.
Councilmember Ellison.
I just wanted to like add some context, because I think that it, I think that this is, it's important to say that we're all dealing, a part of what created this housing crisis in the first place is that we're all dealing with a history that was a national phenomenon that is not unique to Minneapolis, which is to say that 50-plus years ago, you had a lot of folks who were really affluent, who en masse, most of them white, moved out of urban areas all across the United States. And now, for the first time since then, we're seeing this huge influx of folks coming back into the city, right? The people who left, their kids, their grandkids are coming back into the city. And so one thing that I don't want to understate is how unique the problem is that we're facing, because I think that it can be, we can start to assume that we, that we actually know how to tackle this issue when very smart people in Portland, very smart people in Oakland, very smart people in San Francisco and New York and Boston and other cities have not been able to solve this issue. The other thing I wanted to say is that, you know, racial concentration is not what created these disparities. I think that concentrated and policy-driven racism created a lot of these disparities, which is to say that race in and of itself didn't create the disparities, but racism from bodies like ours created these disparities. And I just want to draw that line, because I think it's important to state. Which is to say that gentrification was created via 1,000 policy cuts, right? And I think that gentrification will end up dying 1,000 cuts as well. This is one of them to echo what both councilmembers Conno and Schrader have stated. The mayor is looking to do something, I think, you know, with a new policy position on housing, right? This could be another way that we are making sure that we're investing in communities. Inclusionary zoning is another way. We have to be innovative, and we have to be willing to try things that we haven't tried before in order to both stabilize communities, make sure we're making the investments that we can. And maybe if this point system isn't what has been, if this point system hasn't been enough to convince areas of concentrated wealth, racially concentrated white areas to build more affordable housing, then maybe it is a matter of, of creating a mandate, and maybe it is inclusionary zoning that is going to get us over the hump. When it comes to this score and criteria, I think that it's, it sends a statement that we are not going to do what every other city has done, which is to slowly march towards 0% affordability, as Portland recently reached, but that we are going to, and not be ambivalent about whether or not displacement and gentrification is happening. We know that, as Councilmember Conno said, transit-oriented development is, is a thing that exists, right? We have huge transit lines coming through North Minneapolis, potentially up to four, right? And so these are, so if we invest in place and if we make sure that there's enough places to, to live right now, we have to do that now, because once these transit lines go up, as the price of land goes up, the city as a whole is going to become wealthier, and we've got to be willing to do something quickly. I think that this puts us in a position to invest and stabilize folks in place.
Thank you. Councilmember Pomsano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to kind of stay up on a, on a more superficial level here, I want to point out how much I greatly appreciate all the attention to this issue. I mean, the dynamics here are that my fellow policymakers, all of us, care a lot about this issue, and you don't see every city council across the country having these really hard conversations as often as, as we have. Sometimes you don't see it at all. People aren't really willing to enter into this, this brave space. I also want to say I have a lot of respect for Council President Bender, who worked very hard to find some middle ground here, bringing people together on this issue. It is really important. We also have some housing experts on the council. We do. We have a standalone housing committee for the first time in my tenure here that helps to bring more attention to this than ever. But before we take a step like this, I'd like to see an analysis of the impact of this change, because there seems to be some disagreement. So that's where I'm at on this issue right now. Thanks.
Councilmember Jenkins.
Thank you, Council President Bender. I'm, I'm curious, as Councilmember Goodman mentioned, some legal implications around this change, to get an opinion from our city attorney regarding those comments.
And maybe before turning it over to Ms. Segal, I can comment that we work very closely with the staff on our housing section that was the author of our furthering, affirmatively furthering fair housing report, and this is the approach that our staff recommended taking in keeping with the, all of the outcomes of that work. But Ms. Segal, if you wanted to add anything to that.
During this discussion, I have exchanged an email with Shelley Rowe, who is the lead attorney on all of this. I don't want to off-the-cuff issue an opinion on it, one way or the other. I think the council can proceed today on what is in front of them, but, but I don't want to just give an off-the-cuff opinion one way or the other.
Thank you. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to kind of take a step back and look at this from a 30,000-foot view, which is what we're really discussing here is a philosophical difference of a pathway to equity. One being that economic integration of intentionally building mixed-income neighborhoods by intentionally investing affordable housing in high-income areas is a pathway to equity. And the thing is, is that mixed-income neighborhoods are, you know, they are, nobody's disagreeing that they should exist. I feel like that's a common place between these philosophical differences. But where I, where I am at, and I think that I also, Councilmember Ellison is also in agreement with me as Northsiders, that when I see this in this conversation, economic integration is coded, and it really is racial integration, because it's very hard to separate economics and race. And so when we talk about integration, racial integration, I think that's really where our problem lies, because success of a community, a marginalized community, should not have to be measured by proximity to whiteness and wealth in order to, for that to be measured as success. When, when we talk about, there's affordable housing in North Minneapolis, and that's a concentration of it, that is a huge misperception, because actually there are tier two and three properties that are maybe two-bedroom homes for rent that are $15.75. It is not affordable. People are manipulating Section 8, like there's all sorts of things that are happening that make North Minneapolis not affordable. We do need more affordable housing in North Minneapolis. Councilmember Ellison, I think really, where, where we, he spoke to this, and I think where we really live is in, in place, geographic place. We want to build a mixed, mixed-income community in North Minneapolis by building the wealth of the folks that are already there, stabilizing folks who already live in North Minneapolis, who are having a hard time staying in the community. We want to invest in the place and not just focusing on, well, if we take poor black folks from North Minneapolis and put them in a higher income area because that's where they can afford rather than being able to stay with our community in North Minneapolis, that is not a measure of success for our community. So this is where the philosophical difference lies. I definitely am not going to sit here and say that we should not be building affordable housing everywhere in the city. It is, folks living in poverty is not just in North Minneapolis, not just in Ward 9, not just in Ward 6. Folks are struggling with poverty in every area of this city. So I definitely still support that. But I think that we need to understand, this council needs to understand, that there's been a philosophical shift in North Minneapolis, that we want to invest in the folks that are already there. We want to stabilize the folks that are already there. When we talk about building a mixed-income neighborhood, it's not about taking the poor folks out of our community, it's about building wealth for them and stabilizing them. So I just wanted to name that, because a lot of this conversation is talking about folks that live in our community, folks that, it's like, well, they'll be better if they are able to afford to live somewhere in a more integrated area. Again, when we talk about integrated, it means the, how we measure integration is the amount of people of color, but we don't consider other areas that are concentrated with white folks as segregated. And so, but we are considered segregated in North Minneapolis despite being so diverse. So we have a philosophical shift that has happened and on North, on the North side about how we are looking to invest in place. So as folks who are here debating this, we need to be heard that this is the direction we would like to see for our community to be stabilized. What has been done is not working, and so we want to be innovative and looking forward, because we here have the opportunity to do it right. And honestly, on our, our watch, Councilmember Ellison and I, we're going to do everything to make sure that our community is not decimated for the sake of the definition that success is proximity to whiteness and wealth. Thank you.
Thank you. I put myself back in queue, I just wanted to kind of, once again, just reiterate that a few things. Number one, that this is a relatively small change to the point system. Number two, it does maintain the underlying structure that was part of the Fair Housing Report that does still advantage projects outside of concentrated areas of poverty as defined by the Metropolitan Council, but that it flattens that and shifts the point system to reduce the penalty for those projects that are affordable in the concentrated areas. And the reason that I felt strongly about working with Councilmember Conno and Ellison on this is because when I hear my colleagues who come from and represent areas that have been externally defined, and hear them saying that they aren't comfortable with the policy direction that is impacting their community, I am compelled to support them. And what I hear from our colleagues is that, number one, we need to stabilize housing costs in every area of our city, including in areas that have lower rents today and higher rates of poverty. And number two, as a second step, dramatically increase our economic investment in those areas. And we've started to do that in small, simple ways. We've started to focus our infrastructure spending through our Public Works Department, through our race equity lens. We, I think, have a lot more work to do in this area, but again, the first step really is to get a handle on stabilizing communities that are facing displacement and making sure that we are not furthering the stress on communities of color in our city that are facing so much displacement today. And again, I don't want to overemphasize the amount of change this makes, but it is a simple gesture, I think, as some of our other council members have said, to signal that this council is supportive of this direction, that our council members from these words are telling us they want to take. Councilmember Fletcher. I'm sorry, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with a lot of what Councilmember Ellison and Cunningham have had to say here. My objection is not changing the policy. My objection is changing the policy in the context of a point structure. I think we have to have a conversation about changing the policy, and I respect where they're coming from. In fact, my whole career has been about building affordable housing in other parts of town, as much as I fight for it in my own part of town. I do want to address the issue of could we be sued, or could there be further problems? I, I don't believe, I believe that eliminating points for economic integration altogether would raise a red flag, and that's why they didn't do that, because they're trying to, they, the authors are trying to protect us from that, and I think that there is intent in that, and I appreciate it. But by going from nine points to two, it is effectively gutting the policy, and I don't, I think we have to have a conversation with the developers, the advocates, the stakeholders... with the developers, the advocates, the stakeholders in order to get to that policy change. So that is my objection. I'll also note, there is a philosophical difference in approach. And I don't think it's about issues of integration or segregation. It's a question about choice. And that all people of all races and backgrounds have choice about where they live. And right now, there's not a lot of choice because there's not a lot of affordable housing in more affluent parts of town. And so, we had this conversation yesterday, and I don't mean to give my example to be equal to Councilmember Ellison's example, but I know that when my forefathers came here, and they're Jewish, they all chose to live together in a shetel in New York, and they wanted to be together. And there is, I respect the fact that that was their choice, and they had the opportunity to do that. So I don't want to get into whether or not people should be forced out into the suburbs. I was here for that conversation during the Holman decree. And we thought people should have choice. And others thought people should be moved out to the suburbs. And that didn't work out so good. The city's point of view was we will rebuild affordable housing in the same location so people can have the choice to stay exactly where they are with better housing. And so the city has a long history of ensuring that people of all incomes have choice. And I am fearful that this change will provide for less choices for people to live in all neighborhoods in the city. I'll note, we're part of a much broader conversation. Those of you who have been following this for years know that you have kind of the Myron Orfield way of thinking, which is, the city is already concentrated with poverty. You can't have any more affordable housing in the city. It needs to go to the suburbs. Then you kind of have the Kira Edgetz way of thinking, which is, there should be more affordable housing in the suburbs, but there should also be more affordable housing in the city. The city's policy on this is to take Edgetz's point of view and then take a few steps to the left. We believe that we should have more in our city. We believe that people should have the choice about where to live and to live in the city, and they should have a choice to live anywhere in the city. I think this is a good policy conversation to have, but not in the context of a point system that didn't come out of a policy change, that wasn't vetted by advocates, neighborhoods, builders of affordable housing. That is my concern, that this is a major policy change. It might be well-do, but not in this context. And I think that we should have this conversation, and it sounds like we are, but we need to have it with our staff, with data. I'll go all the way back to the very first thing I said. Look at the map. Statistics don't lie. Almost all of the affordable housing that's been built in the city in the past 15 years has been built in concentrated areas of poverty. I'm not saying race, I'm saying poverty. That is a fact. There is overlap. And what we're trying to do is give a few projects a chance to move into other parts of town so that people who want to live wherever they want will actually have a real choice. That's what our whole Section Eight anti-discrimination ordinance that I co-authored was about. Making sure that people with vouchers have choices to live anywhere they want in the city. And I don't, like I said, I don't object to an eventual change. I object to doing it under the guise of a minor change that involves points.
Councilmember Fletcher?
Thank you, President Bender. So this is a great conversation, and it's one that I've been wrestling with. I represent one of the wards that will have a harder time, will be disadvantaged in the point system and the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And I'm going to be voting in support of this, and I want to kind of talk a little bit about why. We, as some of my colleagues have rightly pointed out, there are other mechanisms for getting affordable housing built. Inclusionary zoning is the one that's been named, but I'll just say that we are developing a pretty impressive pipeline. I'm pretty excited about what's going on in Ward Three in terms of projects and development. And not one of them has requested money from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund because with the land values in downtown, the $25,000 limit or even the $40,000 limit, if we're looking at sort of how that works, just doesn't actually meet the criteria. So they're looking at LITAC, they're looking at other kinds of criteria. And so we're getting these projects built. They're not coming out of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. What it feels like to me is that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is probably the place that the council has the most ability to really shape policy because so much of this other stuff is sort of shaped by federal. And I think it's the place that we need to be responsive to a shift in both the dynamic of what's happening in the world and in our city, and in what we're hearing from communities of color, what we're hearing from the representatives of communities of color on this dais, that gentrification is really the danger and the thing that we need to be responding to, that there is a need to stabilize communities so that people can stay where they are. And we're hearing that loud and clear. And I think using the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in that way, and knowing that there are a lot of other tools, knowing that this is actually, in many ways, not going to resolve the question about, do you build affordable housing in areas of concentrated wealth? Do you build affordable housing in areas of concentrated poverty? The answer to both of those questions is yes. Yes, we do. We need to build affordable housing everywhere. It's a question of which tools do we use and how do we use them? And I think signaling to everybody, signaling to staff, signaling to the city, signaling to developers, that this is the policy direction where this council is going, to invest in stabilizing communities that are at risk of gentrification, that are at risk of displacement, that saw a lot of turnover of ownership and of community wealth in the foreclosure crisis and are seeing the ongoing results of that. I think makes a lot of sense. So I'm happy to support this. I really appreciate this conversation and the work that everybody's put into really thinking about this. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think it's been really helpful to hear my colleagues on both sides of this issue and the compelling points around this. And for me, I think one of the issues with this isn't even related to these points being made for or against. It's really around process. I've got this language about this amendment minutes before this council meeting. Now, I was told that folks were going around briefing yesterday around this. And people had my cell phone number, and I didn't get a call about it. And it was in meetings yesterday. So this is really, I've only had a few minutes before the council meeting to digest this. And it involves millions and millions and millions of dollars in decisions being made. And I want an opportunity to talk with staff about this. I want to hear from the affordable housing community. I just think we owe it to the public to have transparency around these decisions and to have thorough discussion. And I feel like we've had thorough discussion up here, but we have a very missing holistic voice on this issue and perspective because it has been brought up so last minute. Frankly, I think we can do better. And I just wanted to point that out. And that's agnostic of, you know, these points for or against this. I think it's been, I've been impressed by my colleagues' arguments today on this. But I just wish we had more transparency and ability to do our due diligence on this because frankly, as a policymaker, I feel like I'm now in a position where I don't have complete information or at least as much information as one could reasonably get if they just had a few extra days on something like this. And that's all I wish that I had when making this decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ellison?
I just wanted to make the point that when we're talking about poor communities, that poor communities will begin to thrive and do better when we start investing in them, not necessarily via osmosis by living in wealthier communities. And I just wanted to highlight that. And that has been said by my colleagues a few times, but I wanted to state that. Because people should have a choice in where they live, but I don't want us to conflate that with a wealth-building strategy. That giving folks choice in where they live is not necessarily a wealth-building, not necessarily a wealth-building strategy. And what we need to also be invested in when it comes to poor communities is stabilizing folks so that they can, because otherwise, with the direction that we're going in, we won't have, we won't have any poor communities in our city to work with to help them build wealth. We're going to have folks, like in other cities, being displaced into our inner-ring suburbs, you know, which is already happening. You know, you go to places like Brooklyn Center, and it's basically North Minneapolis, right? And so this is about stabilizing folks in place so that we can have a chance at addressing the community's need, poor communities' needs, and helping our communities build wealth. So just wanted to state that.
All right. Councilmember Schrader?
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief. Councilmember Ellison had a lot of points I wanted to hit. And I really, the main point is that we're talking about how great this conversation is about housing. And I want to point out that it has to be. It isn't exciting and wonderful that we're having this. We have neglected our housing for years and for decades, and we need to do something now. And for me, what I, as we talk about this, we have limited resources. So as we, I don't say lightly that we should use other tools. I say that in the context of, we have very limited dollars, and we have to be very thoughtful about where are communities that have a lot more opportunities, a lot more wealth, a lot more market advantages? How do we use that and build more affordable housing compared to other places that are being overlooked and not served by the market?
All right, thank you. Is there any other comments on the amendment? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Goodman?
No.
Johnson?
Aye.
Aye.
Palmasano?
No.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Fletcher?
Aye.
Jenkins?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
President Bender?
Aye.
There are 10 ayes and 3 nays. That carries, and the amendment is adopted. I believe we still need to vote on the underlying motion. Maybe you do that as a voice vote, or would you prefer a roll call? Clerk, please call the roll on item three from the HPD Committee. Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Fletcher?
Aye.
Jenkins?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
President Bender?
Aye.
There are 13 ayes. That carries, and that completes the HPD Committee report. And I just want to thank my colleagues again for such a thoughtful discussion. I know we took quite a lot of time on that, and I know that is the beginning of a long conversation we'll continue to have about housing affordability and all the other issues that came up. Next, we have the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee, and the report will be given by the committee chair, Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. The Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee brings forward six items today. The first is a grant from the Minnesota Department of Human Services for non-enforcement tobacco compliance checks. The second is a grant from Minnesota Department of Health for home visiting services. The third is a data use agreement with Hennepin County for health data. Four is a cost-sharing agreement for expansion of Green Initiative's cost-share program and agreement template modifications. Five is a technical amendment to a previously passed council action. And six is the 2018 Urban Scholars Program funding from partner organizations. I move approval of these six items.
Councilmember Cunningham has moved the committee report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Fletcher?
Aye.
Jenkins?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
President Bender?
Aye.
There are 13 ayes. That carries, and the report is adopted. Next, we have the report of the Transportation and Public Works Committee, given by the Chair, Councilmember Reich. I'll just note that after the normal committee report, we do have an additional item regarding dockless bicycle sharing, and we're joined by our Public Works Director to help us out with that. But I'll turn it over to Councilmember Reich for the report first.
Thank you, Madam President. We have 10 items plus the additional one that you referenced. Item one is the Fifth Street Northeast, Spring Street Northeast Reservicing Project Approval and Assessment. Details are listed. Item two is the Armored South Area Residential Street Reservicing Project Approval and Assessment. Item three is the Jordan West and Ruler South Residential Street Reservicing Project Approval and Assessment. Item four is the Oak Park Alley Construction Project Approval and Assessment. Item five is the 2018 Alley Renovation Program Project Designation and Cost Estimate. Item six is the Special Service District's 2017 Operating Plan and Budget Amendments. Item seven is the bid for specialty vegetation management at stormwater treatment facilities. Item eight is the bid for fine aggregate. It's a sole responsive bid. Item nine is the bid for the 61st Street West Street Reconstruction Project. Item 10 is the contract amendment with Nice Ride Minnesota to operate a pilot dockless bicycle sharing program. I'll move all items and then deal with the additional item.
Thank you. Councilmember Reich has moved the TPW report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Madam President, just to clarify, there were 10 items read. We're actually voting on items one through nine.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So on items one through nine from the TPW report, clerk, please call the roll. Councilmember Cunningham?
Aye.
Ellison?
Aye.
Goodman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Palmasano?
Aye.
Gordon?
Aye.
Kano?
Aye.
Reich?
Aye.
Fletcher?
Aye.
Jenkins?
Aye.
Schrader?
Aye.
Worsami?
Aye.
President Bender?
Aye.
There are 13 ayes. That carries, and the report is adopted. That brings us back to the additional item. Councilmember Reich, can you explain what's happening for the council?
Thank you, Madam President. The Transportation Public Works Committee The Transportation Public Works Committee did have an item on its agenda that does not appear today in the report, and that item relates to the proposed pilot of dockless bicycle sharing. The committee acted favorably on that proposal and forwarded it to the Ways and Means Committee, but apparently it did not make it to the Ways and Means Committee, and therefore did not get submitted to the full council today. There is some time sensitivity in launching this pilot program, so I'm hoping we can expedite it through this additional process.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, could you help us with the process?
Madam President, there was an error in the clerk's office. As the council member explained, the item did correctly go to TPW at its last meeting and was acted on favorably with the recommendation to forward to Ways and Means because it is a contract amendment. It did not appear on the Ways and Means agenda. So that error means that the item remains in the committee until the committee forwards its actions under the council rules unless, under Rule Six, Section Five, the council doesn't approve a motion on a two-thirds vote to discharge the committee to bring that matter to this body today.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. And then Director Hutchison, did you want to address the council on this item?
Council President Bender and members of the committee, thanks for a moment to give a very brief overview of the item. Many of you are aware of this item, especially if you are a part of the Transportation and Public Works Committee. We brought forward to the Transportation and Public Works Committee an item that authorizes Public Works to modify, amend, an agreement that exists today with Nice Ride that enables them to subcontract with a dockless bike-share provider. This is in an effort to pilot a program proactively prior to a provider entering our city and bringing bikes, as we've seen in other communities. This was viewed upon favorably by the committee because not only does it allow us to act proactively, there are terms within this amendment that allow us to reach some of our goals, providing equitable distribution of bikes, high-quality bikes, data privacy, as well as data access. So I'm asking for consideration today. Dockless bikes are, we would like to act upon this sooner rather than later so that we have an organized way this summer to bring them into our city, and I would appreciate your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Councilwoman Worsami is the Chair of our Ways and Means Committee. I want to make sure before we would continue that the Chair does not have any issues or concerns about discharging, this is the term, from the committee.
Thank you, Madam President. I've been briefed by the staff, and as there is no direct financial impact because of the contract amendment, I see no reason to delay action today. Therefore, I will move to discharge the Ways and Means Committee of this item so that it can be considered today by the full council.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Jenkins.
Yes, I'm just curious as to how do people access this? Do you need an app, a credit card? Like, how are people accessing the dockless bikes?
Council President Bender and Vice Council President Jenkins. Got it right. That's a question that has been asked to us before. The entire industry is changing in bike sharing. The bicycle is found, located by a mobile device. It is unlocked by a mobile device, and when it's returned, the mobile device is what confirms the return. Today, a bicycle is checked out by a credit card. We know that we have challenges to access. Today, that challenges those who do not have a credit card. In this instance, it may be those who do not have a phone. We have a commitment from Nice Ride, our trusted partner, as well as a subcontractor, to explore ways to reduce all of the barriers to people accessing bicycles. I heard a statistic last week, 77% of people have mobile phones. That's a nice, high number, but we also want to be sure that for the 33% who don't, that we are working with our partners to explore ways to have as much access as possible.
Thank you. And I thought, Councilmember Jenkins, did you have any other questions?
Not done.
No problem, I just wanted to make sure. Councilmember Gordon.
I specifically asked this question at the committee meeting, and I was reassured that go-to cards would be one of the options that would be developed, and there was already negotiations that were going on with the mid-council. And that's my expectation, is that that will be another alternative, and there may even be others. I'm sure you couldn't actually locate them with the go-to card, of course, but I think you could unlock them, and you could use them and pay for them with that. So I really appreciated that, and I'm counting on it to be a reality when they come out because I do think we need alternatives to the smartphone. And the system that we're developing also means that the docking stations are going to be a known entity, so there could potentially be maps all over where you could find where the other docking stations are too, and not all over. Not a litter problem, I'm not going there, but you know, available to people on places other than their smartphone.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on Councilwoman Worsami's motion to discharge the item from the Ways and Means Committee? And that item would need, that vote would need nine affirmative votes to pass. Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries. And then I'll go back to Councilmember Reich, Chair of the TPW Committee, for a motion on the underlying item.
Thank you, Madam President, and on behalf of the TPW Committee, I'm happy to move this item, and will note my appreciation for the extraordinary parliamentary maneuverings that we had to do to get this moved forward and the accommodation of the Chair of Ways and Means. I'll also note that timeliness was important. We wanted to get this moving in the summer months for residents to try this out as a pilot, knowing that there are incredible changes that we wanted to be ahead of as a city, to get the maximum benefit from this new, these new technological changes, but not having the downsides that other municipalities have had to face without such measures in place. So with that, again, I move this item for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved forward the contract amendment with Nice Ride Minnesota to launch the dockless bicycle sharing program. Is there any discussion? I'll just briefly comment myself that I really appreciate the level of detail that has gone into the discussions with Nice Ride and the community about how we can make sure that we manage this new technology in a way that's successful for everyone in our community. And we have a huge advantage in Minneapolis over other cities that are experiencing a shift to dockless bike sharing because we have an existing relationship with a nonprofit operator in Nice Ride. And they share our commitment to equitable access to bicycles, to ensuring that we center race equity in this important part of our transportation infrastructure, and in making sure that the city is an active partner in deciding when and where these bicycles roll out, how many there are, and where they're located in our public right-of-way. And again, those are, that's really not the case in a lot of the other cities that we see experiencing this. And so I just want to thank Nice Ride for all of your leadership. Over so many years, you were one of the first organizations in the country to roll out docked bike sharing. You have been an innovator and a leader in so many ways, including making sure that the public has access to data, which helps us plan for our transportation system overall and do a better job of providing bicycle sharing across our city. And I'm really excited to see how this goes and how it works. I think, again, the contract allows us to continue to improve over time with our partners. So with that, I'll see if there's any other discussion. Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That carries, and the pilot program contract is approved. Thank you so much, Director, as well for being here. That brings us to the final, no, second to final. We always forget zoning and planning. Second to final, Ways and Means Committee with Councilmember Worsami.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. The Ways and Means Committee has eight items to report to the full, for the full council approval today. Items number one, two, and three are legal settlements. Item number four is a gift acceptance from the University of Chicago Harris Public Policy for travel-related expenses to attend the Chief Financial Officer Forum. Item number five is a contract with the city Center for Energy and Environment for Home Energy Squad Visits and Energy Efficiency Loans. Item number six is the Capitol Long Range Improvement Committee Click Appointments, approving the council appointment of Raya Ismaili, seat 20, Ward 10, for the remainder of the two-year term, beginning January 1, 2017, and ending December 31, 2018. Item number seven is the transfer of the Director of Strategic Partnership position and related one-time funding from the City Coordinator's Office to the Mayor's Office. Item number eight is a project labor agreement for public service building project, and I move approval of all these items.
Councilmember Worsami has moved the Ways and Means agenda. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Madam President. I wanted to take a moment to speak to item number seven, so about the Director of Strategic Partnership's position. So first, I want to preface with saying that this is, the apprehension and concerns are not out of disrespect to the mayor. It's really coming, they are coming from a place of a commitment to fiscal responsibility and good, transparent governing. So from a place of fiscal responsibility, we talked, there's been a lot of talk about the two positions that were added in the previous mayor's administration, and where did that additional capacity go? And I was, I was one of the first 11 positions, and then they added the additional two to add out priorities for early childhood education, or early childhood development, as well as sustainability, because those were two priorities to the previous mayor. What has done, what has been done in this administration is that those two positions, the policy areas have been condensed. So, for example, a policy aid has three, the child, early childhood development, youth in education, and public safety. Those two positions were repurposed to be assistant positions to the leaders of the administration, so to build that capacity for the leadership. It's a bit of a false equivalency, though, to compare the two previous policy positions in the previous administration to this position because they're not the same function. And that really gets me then to the good and transparent governing. I'm really concerned by the lack of structure and the job description for this position. I've also mentioned before publicly my concern about the fact that this position is earmarked for a particular person. The lack of transparency and a search is very concerning for me. And then the third big component is a lack of legislative oversight. And the reason why I feel legislative oversight is particularly important in this position is because we are talking about a new model of fundraising. We are looking at, we are looking at funding, raising money to help us with our budget. And there are, that's not something that we've ever done before, and there has to be a lot of intentionality in developing that model because we want to make sure that all of the work that this person is doing to fundraise, and the mayor said that this position would have two functions, one to fundraise, the other to build a coalition with other public jurisdictions. If this position is going to be fundraising, it requires alignment with all of the other housing work. I know that they're not doing policy, but it has to align with the work that's being done in CPED and other, other folks who are doing housing work. This position needs to be aligned with that. And also, there is a perception, like ethical perception issue here, because if we have a fundraising position in an elected office, there is a tremendous lack of transparency in that. And so I have some serious concerns about the perception of the ethics of this role. And so, but really, what, what I, what I would like to see is for us to take a step back and have a conversation about how do we be intentional? How can the council and the mayor work together to take this position, align it with the work that's happening at the city, as well as out in the community? And how do we then actually build that strong coalition? We haven't had that opportunity to have that conversation, which I, which was something that was mentioned on Wednesday at Committee of the Whole, was that there was not a lot of time to be able to actually like dig into it. But really, we are talking about building an entirely new model of fundraising for the city, and we have to be intentional about that. With that, I would actually, I would like to make a motion to move this agenda item, refer it to the Housing Policy and Development Committee for further consideration.
Okay, there is a motion on the item to send it to the HPD Committee. We have a couple councilmembers in queue. Councilmember Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had this go through Ways and Means Committee already. We had a thorough discussion on this at Committee of the Whole. It's been a fairly transparent process, especially considered with the motion that we took previously that just came up today. So I would urge my colleagues to vote no on this motion and to approve this item today.
Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I shared a lot of the same concerns as Councilmember Cunningham. I was able to talk to the mayor and had a lot of those taken out. I would, if that hasn't happened for other councilmembers, I would support putting this to the Housing Committee, but I've got some very good answers that would be supportive.
I wonder, maybe I'll put myself in queue. I know we had a long discussion about this at Cow, and at the time, Councilmember Palmasano had made, but I thought was a good suggestion to maybe postpone one cycle, this decision, just so every councilmember gets a chance to have that kind of one-on-one discussion with the mayor and make sure all those answers, questions are answered. It sounds like maybe that, I personally still have, I did talk to the mayor very briefly yesterday, but I was at the Capitol most of the day. I do have a couple other questions, mostly related to the, that it's at such a high step, which is kind of the range of our department directors. It's a small question, but at the end of the day, this position would just be in the mayor's office, and the mayor could direct the staff to do whatever they, he wants, just like his other staff. So anyway, I think, Councilmember Cunningham, I think just in keeping with the kind of discussion that we had at Cow, I might make a substitute motion to just delay this one cycle, just give a little more time for discussion and make sure that everyone has a chance to have their conversations with the mayor so that we feel good about the decision going forward. Is there any discussion on that substitute motion? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye. Oh, Councilmember Gordon, did you have? Did, I'm sorry, I had called the, for a vote there.
Are we in the middle of a vote?
Yes. So I had called for a vote on a substitute motion to delay by one cycle, just coming back to the council. We've had a lot of discussion about this, so I thought maybe this, councilmembers could just kind of check in with the mayor and get our questions answered.
Well, the aye sounds pretty light, so if it's going to be no, I don't have to talk.
Well, I think that, I paused because I saw you jump in the queue there.
Well, I'll talk then. I think it's the, is that, was that, I wasn't, the council president said. Sorry.
What's that?
What's your preference, Madam President?
I, I made a substitute motion, rather than send it back to a committee to just have it delayed a cycle so folks have a chance to get their questions answered. So that was the substitute.
The opportunity to speak on it over?
No, go ahead.
All right. I would just prefer that it actually came to a committee and could have more discussion than just holding it over, so I prefer the original motion where it would be referred back to a committee, and so we could actually get in-depth into it. I'm, I have a lot of concerns about adding a really high-cost position into the mayor's office to do something we're not sure what they're actually going to do. And it sounds like maybe it's more appropriate work that would be done in CPED or in the City Coordinator's Office anyway, and then the council would actually have an opportunity to influence that. So I'm, not surprisingly, maybe, I'm interested in getting to hear more about it as Chair of the Housing and Policy and Development Committee, if this is all about housing development.
Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. Is there any other discussion on the substitute motion, which would just delay this item by one cycle? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Nay. Okay. People are tired of talking about this. That brings us back to the, under the original motion, which was Councilmember Cunningham's motion to send this back to the Housing Policy and Development Committee. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. That motion fails. And that brings us back to the original Ways and Means Committee report, which was moved by Councilmember Worsami. Is there any more discussion on the Ways and Means report? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye on all items but seven.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
No on seven. Aye on the remaining.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes on the report except for item number seven, which has 11 ayes and 2 nays.
That completes the Ways and Means report, brings us to the most important committee, not to be forgotten, zoning and planning, is Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. I think we need to consider changing her name to the Planning and Zoning Committee, just so we're not last. But in any case, the Zoning and Planning Committee brings forward two, six items today for your consideration. Number one is the appeals of the Planning Commission's decision to appeal the conditional use permit, two variances, and a site plan review for Jackson Lofts project located at 750, 754, 756 Jackson Street Northeast. The committee recommended the denial of two appeals and is sending the remaining two appeals forward without any recommendation. Item two is the approving of the adequacy of the environmental assessment worksheet for the proposed Calhoun Towers development located at 3430 List Place, approving the determination that an environmental impact statement is not required and adopting the staff findings. Item three is the approving of the adequacy of the environmental assessment worksheet for the proposed Malcolm Yards mixed-use residential development, approving the determination that an environmental impact statement is not required and adopting the staff findings. Item four is the approving of the application submitted by Adam Smith with North Point Properties, LLC to rezone the property located at 5048 and 5056 Irving Avenue South from R1A Single Family District to R4 Multiple Family District to construct a new three-story, 16-unit residential building. Item five is the approving of an application submitted by Wellington Management to rezone the property located at 221 Irving Avenue North from R5 Multi-Family District with a TP Transitional Parking Overlay District to the C1 Neighborhood Commercial District to construct a new mixed-use project that includes the construction of a new three-story run residential building and a six, new six-story mixed-use building. And item six is the approving of applications submitted by DJR Architecture to rezone the properties located at 750, 754, and 756 Jackson Street Northeast from R1A Single Family District to OR1 Neighborhood Office Residential District to construct multifamily dwelling with 16 units and to vacate the portion of the public alley over 756 Jackson Street Northeast and dedicating a new alley across 750 Jackson Street Northeast. I will pull item one for discussion, and will move items one through six.
Councilmember Schrader has moved items two through six from his zoning and planning report. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Ellison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and items two through six were adopted, and brings us back to item number one. Councilmember Schrader.
Thank you, Madam President. I understand that Councilmember Fletcher has a motion he would like to break for item one, and I'll defer to him.
Thank you. Councilmember Fletcher.
Thank you, President Bender. So item number one, two of the items were sent forward without recommendation, and I think that's a reflection of a very vibrant conversation that happened in the St. Anthony East Neighborhood Association, and I appreciate, and I want to thank my colleagues for taking seriously the concerns raised by the neighborhood. I think having reviewed the public hearings, having reviewed the modifications made by the developer, and having been part of a vibrant conversation on housing that includes both a set of concerns around some of the tensions around development, and also a real expression of a desire from renters in the St. Anthony neighborhood to have more housing options, I think the right thing to do is to deny this appeal. And I know that there's no outcome that's going to make everybody happy, but I am going to go ahead and move that we deny the appeal.
Councilmember Fletcher has a motion for item number one. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Cunningham.
Aye.
Allison.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Palmasano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Conno.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Fletcher.
Aye.
Jenkins.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Worsami.
Aye.
President Bender.
Aye.
There are 13 ayes.
That carries, and the zoning and planning report is adopted. Next order of business is a notice of ordinance introductions. This morning, Councilmember Schrader gives notice of intent to introduce at the next regular meeting of the city council the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code pertaining to licenses and business regulations related to authorized places of sale and license requirements. That notice is given. We have two items on the introduction and referral calendar today. The first is a motion by Councilmember Johnson pursuant to notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code related to air pollution and environmental protection related to nuisance odor, and referring it to the Public Health, Environment, Civil Rights, and Engagement Committee. The second is a motion by Councilmember Worsami pursuant to notice to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the city charter to increase debt limits on borrowing for capital expenditures, and referring that matter to the Intergovernmental Relations Committee. Are there any questions or comments from councilmembers? Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries, and both of the ordinances are referred to the appropriate committees. Okay, so we have now the new order of business to the item that was added to the amended agenda. This is a request from the city attorney to join an amicus brief as explained in the RCA at your desks, and I'll ask the city attorney to offer a very brief explanation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Earlier this year, the federal government sought to implement a new, what they call, religious and moral exemption to the contraceptive coverage mandate under the Affordable Care Act. There are a number of states, California, Delaware, Virginia, Maryland, et cetera, that sued over this, and at the district court level, there's a preliminary injunction in place barring implementation of this change. The federal government has appealed the district court's decision, and that is -- appeal is currently pending in the Ninth Circuit, and the city attorney's office is requesting permission to join in as an amicus on behalf of the states to try to protect the current contraceptive coverage mandate under the Affordable Care Act.
Thank you, Ms. Segal. Are there any questions or comments from councilmembers? I don't see any. Is there a motion to approve the request?
The move.
Second.
Okay, that has been moved and seconded. All in approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That carries. The request to join the amicus brief is approved. Then we have announcements. Are there any announcements from councilmembers? Councilmember Conno.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to invite everyone to join us this weekend, Saturday and Sunday. The Bike Hub Co-op and Moon Palace Books are having their block party, and they're going to do a celebration of all the investment work that they've been doing in that area for rethinking the economic strategies that neighborhoods can take on by doing worker co-ops and doing community centers with bookstores and local artists. So it's going to be a day-long celebration from about 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. on Saturday. There's going to be free classes on how to fix your bike with some free tools to take home. There's going to be smoothies that are going to be blended up in a bike blender. There's going to be artists doing chalk art. There's going to be music. There's going to be clowning. There's going to be lots of stuff. So this is part of the Downtown Longfellow initiative, and so if folks haven't gotten a chance to get out to the Longfellow area, they consider themselves Downtown Longfellow, and I think it's going to be really fun, and the weather seems like it's going to be great. So it'll be on Minnehaha and Lake Street, and it'll be 70 degrees on Saturday. So I hope to see you there.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Madam President, I'm sorry, just one last thing. We have one last item of business that failed to be brought forward to the council. I'm sorry about that. It's on that side of the dais. Should be on that side of the dais.
The piece of -- oh, stop.
Oh.
No, don't do this. This is embarrassing.
I would like to talk.
All right. Well, I would like to announce that it was Council Vice President Jenkins' birthday yesterday.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, you son of a gun. Happy birthday to you.
Ready? Thank you. All right. I'm going to move to adjourn.
So moved.
And actually, we are adjourning to a closed session, so the motion should be a brief closed session. All who are in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Madam President, I am sorry to say this, but just for public notice, we're adjourning for a closed session today, and at the end of that closed session, this session continues on May 24, 2018.
That's right.
At 11:30 a.m., at which point the council will be receiving the 2018 State of the City address from Mayor Jacob Frye.
Thank you so much, Mr. Clerk. Thank you. So we will see everyone in the closed session.